Recording in progress.
No, absolutely. You will take your suggestions, feedback, recognition from this. I'm sure we realize things were done. It's going to be worth it more than things that may be.
All right. Call this meeting to order. Start with a new vacation. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this afternoon to meet as as an elected body here to make decisions on behalf of our constituents here in our county. Father, we'd ask that thou would bless us, bless us with the knowledge, with the information that we need to make these decisions and bless us with the ability to make the decisions that we think are best for our county. Father, bless our first responders, our law enforcement, our firefighters, that they will be protected. Father, let thy Spirit be with them to let them know that there are those in the community that love them and that appreciate everything that they do for our community. Father, bless us, bless our country, our state and our county. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Mr. Chairman, will you leave us with a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to our first item, which is a presentation. And the presentation is going to be by Bob Harmon with our code enforcement.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I stand before you to present the yard of the month for July 2021. This award has been on hiatus now for more than a year, and I'm very happy that it's back. I am, it is my sincerest pleasure to present this word to Leonard and Angie Neal for their property at 19 Road 2843. Their hard work and attention to detail are evident everywhere you look on this property. And considering it's located on the end of a cul-de-sac, it is for their enjoyment. And I really believe probably the driving force is probably Angie. It's the pride that they have in being able to enjoy the fruits of their labor. I'm sorry. Please come down and help me congratulate them and maintain their beautiful property.
Well, I know that Leonard takes pride in everything that he does, so I'd imagine his yard is the same. And I bet he was surprised. Did you leave a message to say, hey, this is code compliance? You need to call me back.
I knocked on the door.
We were actually wondering if there's code compliance.
This is not good.
So I'm going right here. We will. And then we'll let you hold it.
All right.
Oh, wait, wait.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. President.
One, two, three, one, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. And I'll bring the sign by the wall.
Thank you, guys.
Don't tell her where I'm at.
We have to leave, but the last state committee will catch you on YouTube.
All right. All right, it doesn't look like there's any special meetings, so we'll move into our regular meeting. And we'll stand for approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes for tonight.
All right, I'll stand for a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I will presume that it was unanimous. Commissioner Sullivan, are you there? All right, should we move forward or do you want me to wait?
If we can get it back real quick, hopefully. I want to continue.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Item number one is consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes of July 6, 2021. Number two, consideration of approval of finance check registers for June 2021. Number three, consideration of request to serve as fiscal agent to apply for the community DWI prevention grant. Number four, consideration of budget adjustment number 16, resolution number 20 dash or 21 dash 22 dash 04. Number five, consideration of approval of fiscal year 21, final quarter financial report, resolution number 21 dash 22 dash 05. Number six, consideration of commission certification of annual inventory. Number seven, consideration of changes of housing choice voucher administrative plan. Does anybody have any questions, wish to move anything off of the consent agenda? I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second that motion.
All right, having been moved and seconded, those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume that it passes unanimously. That brings us to old business. Number one, which is consideration of location of film backlot property. And it is an action item presented by Mr. Hollywood Devon Neely.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for time this afternoon. And excuse me, this afternoon, I'm Devon Neely, the Public Relations and Film Manager for San Juan County. And we've brought before you again consideration of approval of location of a backlot studio here in San Juan County. As you're all well aware, after grant funding was awarded by the state of New Mexico, the staff has endeavored to spend that money in a wise way that brings film productions to our area. The first step was through the retrofitting and work at the Tota Theater, which has been completed since then. Our contracted consultant, Don Gray, who is on the line with us this afternoon, has recommended a location for backlots of the three locations that we looked at, the San Juan County Industrial Park, a piece of property south of Jackson Lake, owned by the city of Farmington, and Lyons Park, owned by San Juan County. Mr. Gray has indicated that San Juan County Industrial Park would be the preferred location for the backlot. Some of you have toured the three locations and seen some things and asked some questions. And with that, staff would request that you go ahead and approve the use of the San Juan County Industrial Park for a backlot facility. Before you, some materials on the desk. You can see some, one map showing the three locations and then three individual maps showing the locations. And on those maps, there is a box indicating where on that property we would probably build the backlot. And as I mentioned, Mr. Gray is on the line with us and would be able to stand for any questions as well. Would
Does anybody have any questions?
Hey, Mike, you guys went and looked at it, right?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Sullivan, yes, we did. We had three Commissioners come out to take a look at the three locations.
And what was their response?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, I would defer to them. What was your response or your reaction to the properties?
I'll just say that first I want to thank Devon and then Don Gray for all their work in working this up and then taking us out to see this. I agree with what Mr. Gray's assessment was personally. It was interesting to see the big facility that reminded me of the studios on I-40, where you can set a studio box, and I don't know what they call it, a studio stage. And it's huge and it looks like it's ready to go. There's probably some things that need to be done. But as far as the three locations, it seemed like it had the best options of what's available there, having been a working facility.
Well, and I would say that visually, I think my favorite was the Jackson Lake property. But in looking at some of the pros and cons with access, with easements and those types of things, I think that the industrial park makes the most sense. I would ask, Mr. Gray, what are some of the pros and cons that you analyzed in coming to your decision that the industrial park is the best location?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having me today. You know, the first property that I saw was the Jackson Lake property, which I thought aesthetically was really a home run for what you're looking to put location-wise. That's usually the first question that we look at in a film production is aesthetically, does this meet the story needs of the story that we want to tell? And the Jackson Lake property was great. It did have some associated issues with it, mostly infrastructure issues. And those are not for nothing. There are a lot of really wonderful aesthetic storytelling locations throughout the state of New Mexico that probably will never be shot because they can't practically be gotten to or worked on. And so unfortunately, they'll just remain beautiful spots in New Mexico. I do think that the Jackson Lake spot would be workable. But when I came up to see the Lyons Park location and the industrial park location, it really, the industrial park location to me has so much more going for it. Aesthetically, it's still very good. And then because it has, you know, a great road leading in, it has a pad upon which you can base the company. There's indoor facilities for storage, which yes, could ultimately develop into some stage facilities, onsite utilities. There's just really, in terms of the actual practical working on a film, that location just really is a home run in terms of kind of having everything that you would want already there, that you wouldn't really have to build out. And so, and the Lyons Park location to me had actually, while it had a lot of the advantages of utilities onsite and easy access, to me aesthetically was really not going to work as well as either of the other locations. So really, in my mind, I think that the industrial facility is the best choice. Aesthetically, it's very good, even if not quite as good as the Jackson Lake. It's still very good. And then all of the other factors that a film company would be looking for to work on the site are already there. And so to me, that really switched my way of thinking and changed my mind to that site. And I think that is your best play for sure.
How much does its distance play into that?
You know, I'm working on a movie right now, actually. And we're traveling 30 miles in one direction to shoot things and 30 miles in another direction to shoot some things. And so I think that location is 15 miles-ish or so from downtown. To a movie company, that's not much. I would say that there's probably a, the one thing that might be missing, which in my mind is just a business opportunity for somebody locally or somebody's locally, is to maybe bring some food trucks out at lunch. That's really the only thing that would be missing, that you'd have to spend a lot of travel time going into town and then back out for a lunchtime break. But to me, that just opens up opportunity. So I'm not really worried about that. I'm not at all worried about travel time out there. And I don't think a film company would be either.
So I want to ask our county manager if the one, the second choice, the one that's south of Jackson Lake, if there would be still access to it. I know the road going in is pretty narrow and probably large vehicles can't go through there. But if they wanted to do something there because of aesthetics, is that still an option?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fortner, yes. You know, we're asking you to make a decision on where we would locate the constructed facilities for the backlot. But the other two locations could actually be used by the film industry. So just because you're choosing one doesn't mean the other two would be eliminated from ever being used for a production. So I think that's an important note. I'm glad you brought that up, that they're still going to be available to us. Assuming the city of Farmington would make them available because the Jackson Lake, that's the land owned by them, of course Lyons Park, we can make that happen internally.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioner Fortner and Mr. Stark, I'll mention that Lyons Park is listed with the state's film database, and I have assets to list the industrial complex. Either way, we are working towards listing it as a qualifying facility in San Juan County, whether it has a backlot located there or not. The making it a qualifying facility unlocks an additional 5% tax credit that productions have available to them if they're working in that facility. For all the days they're working in that facility, any expenses incurred are eligible for an additional 5% tax credit once the facility is qualified.
And so would that other area, the also south of Jackson Lake, also be seen, potentially be a qualifying location?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Fortner, no, the Jackson Lake property would have to be improved to become a qualifying facility. A qualifying facility requires a building of 18 feet clear span and 9,000 square feet floor space. Or a backlot, I believe, is five workable exteriors and one workable interior that a film could use. Am I right there, Don? He's nodding. I'm glad for that.
Yes, that's correct.
So both the backlot, we hope that both the backlot and the industrial or the, what do we call it?
San Juan County Industrial Park.
The buildings, they would both qualify for that additional 5%.
Correct, and feasibly, there is sufficient land out there that two companies could be working simultaneously and both be taking advantage of that tax credit because it would be the complex that's qualified. And if I'm not mistaken, the property surrounding.
Okay, so even if they shot just south, but not even on the backlot, it would still qualify.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
One of the things that I really noticed was the security. And the option one, we could secure that with very minimal fencing. And the Jackson Lake would take an extensive amount of fencing.
What's your recommendation?
I think the industrial parks probably going to be the best bet. That is my personal opinion. But I did go to all three. And all three of them do have their attraction for sure. But I think we'll be able to use all three regardless. But we're going to need something with a building. This one has about 20-foot ceilings, I believe.
55, sir.
And like Commissioner Fortner said, when you walk in, you feel like you're walking into a studio already, and it's just, just an old building.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner Sullivan.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and accept the recommendation for the industrial park.
So you move that we set the proposed backlot location at the industrial park?
Right.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I will assume that it passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
All right, that brings us to new business item number one, which is consideration of final plat for Calstock subdivision Phase II, revised phasing plan and subdivision improvement agreement. David Barnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. On July 7, 2020, the Commission approved the preliminary plat for Calstock subdivision to be developed in phases. Phase one was given final plat approval in September of last year. The developer wishes to combine the last two phases into one final phase. Attached is a revised phasing schedule showing that change. Phase two now consists of 14 lots. The only public improvement not installed is the main power line, and a subdivision improvement agreement is proposed to ensure that that's completed. Final plat is in substantial conformity with the approved preliminary plat and complies with subdivision regulations. Staff hereby request final approval, final approval for Phase II, revised phasing plan and the subdivision improvement agreement. I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions? Then I'll stand for a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the final plat for Calstock subdivision Phase II and revised phasing plan and subdivision improvement agreement.
I'll second that.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Not hearing any, I'll presume that it passed unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to item number two, which is consideration of approval of the 2021 Edward Byrne, is that how you say that?
Yeah.
Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Agreement, presented by Under Sheriff Tanner.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. As the Chairman stated, I have the 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application from the Department of Justice. The Sheriff's Office was determined to be eligible to receive $50,727. We're looking to be using the money, the allocation, to purchase in-car computers for our patrol units and the related mounting equipment, docking stations, vehicle wiring harnesses, as well as office stocking stations and some warranties because these are very expensive pieces of equipment. And the last thing we advise, some belt carrying cases for the tourniquets that our deputies carry, so they can continue to carry those on their belts. There are no matching funds required for this grant. One thing I need to note before I send for questions is this grant requires opportunity for public comment.
So at this point, can I just declare or open it? So at this point, can I just declare or open it up for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, I will uh open this item for uh public hearing. Uh, and I would ask that uh if anybody is here that wishes to discuss or make a comment, uh, that now is your time to do so. Is there anybody online? Uh, not hearing any discussion, uh, do I close it or do we just vote on it?
I think you can just vote on it.
Okay. Uh, with there not being any discussion, uh, are there any questions for uh Under Sheriff Tanner? So there's no matching, no matching funds?
Correct, no matching funds.
Okay. All right, I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Services grant agreement.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, I will uh presume that it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number three, which is consideration of amended retention and referral bonus program for the Adult Detention Center. Daniel Webb.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Good afternoon. Uh, so in late May, uh, we enacted a uh retention bonus. I'm sorry, uh, more specifically referral bonus specific to ADC employees. And we uh, in partnership with uh Mr. Neely and HR, there were some other things going on at the same time uh to include some radio ads and electronic billboards. And we seen immediately, we seen we seen an uptick in uh uh applications and I want to say we had a class of maybe even eight, which is it's been a big class for our little academy uh for over a year now. We've seen two, three, and four, sometimes just one at a time. And so we saw an immediate uptick there. Um, but it was short-lived, and so we are uh we're hoping with your approval to extend this uh referral bonus to San Juan County employees with the exception of HR personnel and, sorry, elected officials. We still love your referrals.
How many people uh took advantage of this? How many, how many did we pay out on?
Oh, I if I had the ballpark and I know I've I've had one referral, I think I've got another young man who's uh older brother's a Farmington PD officer that I'm supposed to speak with this evening, maybe um when he gets off of work. I want to say maybe in the neighborhood of ten so far. I think eight to ten would be.
Chairman, if I could, just um, we haven't paid out any yet because they're not eligible.
Oh, you asked about payouts? Sorry, okay. Yeah, so the payouts were uh, if you refer somebody, and this began twenty ninth or thirtieth of May, if I remember correctly. Uh, so after, if you refer somebody, they've been here for six months, uh, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar uh bonus to the referring employee.
So we have ten or so that will be eligible for that if they hit their six months.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then uh another five hundred when they hit the twelve month part.
Okay. Is there and 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 ultimately, I think this is, this is a good program. Is there can you, can you give us an update on where you're at overall? With the employees and and those issues?
Mr. Stark, did you, I know we sent this to you, this ink was wet when I left my office.
I haven't had a chance to make contact. Go ahead.
I got it.
And have the courts been working with you? I know that they are starting to go back in person, and I I know that there's some issues with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the uh, the court graciously given us a grace period extension up to September first. Before they mandate that we start bringing uh people back in front of them.
You said September first or October first?
September first, so. But I I am told Mr. Stark early this morning that uh tomorrow I will be uh sending out another justice partner letter to kind of explain our situation with staffing and everything right now and and uh hopefully they uh, I've stayed in their good graces throughout all of this now. They'll grant us uh an additional additional time if we need it, which I'm pretty sure we're going to.
So you currently have sixty-six officers and have vacancies for forty-one.
Correct. So that sixty-six is a little bit deceiving because uh that does include four officers that we are now currently uh due to um work injury
Extended leave.
Or leave. Uh, I know we've got one officer out for uh, his wife just had a baby, so he's he's been gracious enough to work with us to I think be out two weeks, come back for a week uh rather than just taking full well groups. So uh, we're giving them respect. We get some officers who are very committed, thankfully. So in addition to uh what we've been working on uh as far as staffing, and again, thank you to Devon Neely and then our our HR office and the manager's office. We uh, we've reached out to McGee Park and recently conducted a class for their personnel so that they are not certified necessarily, but so they're trained enough to come pick up detainee workers and and get them back over to the uh McGee Park. Uh, especially now they're getting ready, getting geared up for the fair. Uh, and typically, that's that's always been, you know, something that we provided was detainee labor at McGee Park.
So if they want the help, they get to take the help out?
Pretty much, yeah. We definitely didn't have the set the staff, but that's always been the case. They've always had their people come over. They get trained up and then they're they're able to come and pick up, no matter how many uh detainees we have to allocate for them.
Mr. Stark, have you gone through that training?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have not.
We'll get him on the next roster. Uh, anyhow, so, but um and I think as Mrs. Cook brought it up, that we need to look at um offering to allow those people that go through the class, that are supervising detainees anyhow, um, offer up overtime opportunities for them within a facility, not to work in the pods, but just in the hallways escorting and uh to include some transports to and from court and what have you.
So with the training that they have, they would be qualified to do that?
Yes. So they literally wouldn't be doing pass searches or any of that. They would go to a pod, pick up X amount of detainees, take them uh to video court.
So when I go in for a legal visit, they would, it would be potentially some of them.
Absolutely, could be, yes. Yeah. Uh, and we uh found out today from Mr. Hill that none of his folks were interested in doing that, so. And and these are the same people that essentially came to our aid and and saved our our hindsides in December. Back when we had the second outbreak and and we needed help in the kitchen because due to COVID, we didn't have enough uh detainee assistance? Yeah, to work in the kitchen, which, you know, got us in the into a situation in July of last year. So uh, but anyhow, for for whatever reason, uh, they they opted to not uh want to pick up any of these um overtime positions, so. So that that didn't pan out for us, at least not yet. It's still on the table. They absolutely are welcome to do that. Um, and I'd be remiss if I left out thanking uh Bowen Belt and and Jennifer Miller, respectively, at their agencies. Their officers have stepped up and been coming over and and working some shifts so that my folks can can go home and get some rest. So just want to thank them. Um, we're in discussion right now to look at opening up some part-time positions uh which would allow for even uh retired law enforcement uh to, without messing with their payroll or pension or anything, come back and if I'm correct in that, Mike.
Mm-hmm.
You're correct, Mr. Stark, sorry. Um, so uh, we're getting very creative um to include, we've talked about a uh a hundred dollar stipend for shift pickup uh that would entail actually working a, an eight-hour overtime shift. Uh, so if you look at the top of the the handout I gave you that and Mrs. Cook, Wes Rarchie, she knocked this out just in the last few minutes before we left the facility. Um, so it it it's broken out um ballpark numbers here, really. Uh, but one thing I want you to understand is when you look at the total hours of overtime work, a lot of those hours aren't full eight-hour double double shifts. If that makes sense. We have a lot of folks that will stay over uh from graveyards uh just to help out with with movements and maybe a a transport report or something. So that may just be a three or four or five hour extension of their shift. So uh, and we hon, I honestly don't know what the percentage would be. If you look at uh pay period um FY twenty-one, twenty-second pay period, uh total overtime hours worked is twenty-four ninety-seven. And of course, we broke that out for for eight-hour shifts. I just want you to understand that looking at that, it's not actually going to amount to three hundred and twelve pickup shifts because a lot of those hours um were were less than eight-hour shifts. People stay over two, three, four, or five hours. So so what what you're looking at at the far right, the the two-week total um for stipend payout would actually be considerably less than what you're looking at, I believe.
And is this projected or is this what it would have been if it were in place?
Well, so this is both kind of. Um, it, when when it goes into place, um, we will scrutinize it, only be paying out on the actual eight-hour pickup shift. So people staying over two, three, four, or five hours, um, it, the stipend would have applied at that.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if I if I could, um, and I had had a chance to to review this prior to the meeting, but I can tell you this, um, and and we appreciate Ms. Martin for getting me this number today. We are spending every two weeks sixty-six thousand dollars in overtime. And that's related to the fact that we're short-staffed, um, forty-one positions. So uh, that plays into this number. Um, the stipend that we're suggesting and and discussing with you today, and actually I'm hoping to get your direction on on potentially implementing that.
Because this isn't on the.
That's not on the agenda. That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so what we're asking for you with this first item on the agenda is to extend the referral bonus to all employees with the exception of elected officials and and the HR staff. And just for clarification, the reason we wouldn't extend it to elected officials is by statute, you're not allowed to receive additional compensation. So I want to make that clear for everyone. That we're not trying to purposely exclude you from an opportunity. Uh, however, we would still take your referral. I believe you have those. But but the hundred dollar uh per eight-hour shift stipend would apply to any uh detention officer certified. We want to have trained, certified folks at either of the three facilities that come over to the Adult Detention Center to to pick up an eight-hour shift would receive this stipend uh for doing so on top of their normal wage plus time and a half. And we feel it's necessary to um, you know, we're in a pretty drastic situation. We're relatively staffing. We don't want to see our numbers decline anymore while we're working on a lot of different recruitment angles from retired law enforcement officers, retired detention officers. Um, we will have a booth at the fair next week. HR um specifically is is geared towards uh recruiting detention officers. We have a hiring fair scheduled for August fifth, is that correct, Roberta? Um, specific to detention officers. Of course, we'll continue with our radio ads and social media posts. Um, you know, we we're we're throwing everything at this, including the kitchen sink to try to solve our vacancy issues. And so we believe the stipend would would be a very helpful incentive to encouraging officers um to come over um, probably more specifically alternative sentencing and and juvenile officers who have been helpful to date, no doubt. But I think this would really talking to both Jennifer and Owen would be just that much more of an incentive to come work a double uh or just come work on their day off. And so um, we would strongly recommend putting that in place, and then we'll, of course, would monitor the usage and and the cost. Of course, I don't, I think we'll have any problem paying for it through vacancy savings in the Adult Detention Center, but we've got a few of those unfortunately right now. So that would be our our recommendation from staff to you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Mr. Sheriff, do you have a a list of recently retired officers? Do you keep in contact with them?
I apologize. Yeah, we're pretty closely knit family, so we have a a list of retirees. A lot of our retirees, as you know, with the way our para system's set up, um that are in particular field of work, th- this is a trade. We're law enforcement. We're we're peacekeepers. That's what we do. Unfortunately, the state of Mexico, once we retire, we're out of our field. So a lot of our uh former deputies go on to be security at hospitals, both at San Juan Regional and at Mercy Medical, uh, work in security jobs. We have a lot of guys that work at Pesco. Uh, they struggle trying to find work because there's only one thing they know. So whether it's uh those that have retired in the last year or last few years, and keep in mind, this isn't just the sheriff's office. This is Bloomfield, Aztec, Farmington, that are all seeking an opportunity out there. So if if worthwhile, I think it's something that that could work. Um, Farmington encountered this similar situation several years ago. And we're trying to find a way how to fill their ranks and again, getting over that para hurdle because we're penalized when we try to enter back into our occupation. That's why you see law enforcement leaving the area. Um, for instance, uh, our our former captain Bryce Current went up to Durango to be their deputy chief. Uh, former lieutenant with Farmington PD, Casey Malone, is now Durango's commander. So New Mexico loses these individuals that have a vast amount of experience and investment in them. So I think not only will it be a a good uh way to find applicants for uh Mr. Webb, in addition to that, these people are highly qualified.
Could we set up and make sure that we work together and try to solve it?
Absolutely, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I was talking to the undersheriff about that. And uh, you know, I know several people that may take advantage of that. So even if it's in a part-time status, you know, someone returned to school trying to find other fields that they're in, but yeah, we can definitely get the wind out of there. Uh, out there, I was just talking to him about um a few retirees I ran into today, and it may not be an option for them. Appreciate you.
I have a question for Mr. Webb. So what are, what's the initial um what do you have to have in order to be a correction officer? High school diploma or what's the initial requirements?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fortner, uh, basically just the uh high school diploma or GED and then complete hour, hundred and sixty hours of training.
Okay. Has there been any uh opportunity at the high school? I know it won't fill the gap right now, but to talk to high school students or even at the college?
So I know we did a, it's been a few years back that we did, did a uh um, a recruiting out at the college, set up a booth, and we actually just recently quit um accepting eighteen-year-old applicants. My predecessor, Mr. Havel, um, because of staffing issues, I think in twenty nineteen, um, dropped the the age to eighteen. Um, and I don't know that we even still have one of those folks left at the facility. If we do, it's probably just one. Uh, so I changed back to twenty-one, but I will tell you this, we uh, and I think maybe just in the last two or three months, dealt with HR who've been working for we're just all the same team here. Um, so we did a recruitment out at the uh Armory uh when they were having their two-week drill, and I think we got a good couple of good applicants there. But what we decided was that if somebody were eighteen, they were active in the guard reserve, had X amount, you know, life experience and and moving in in that direction, then we did accept or we do accept those applicants, even at age eighteen. And I think we've got two very qualified applicants getting ready for class.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that uh specifically recently retired Lieutenant Dane Hamlin from the sheriff's office is patient. Is patiently waiting at home for me to call him with information on this. He's ready to go, go to work as early as Friday, but preferably by Monday, he said. So I know for a fact when I start reaching out to these folks, and I did get with under sheriff Tanner this morning. About maybe getting a list of people and I'll do the same thing. I'll reach out to Taft Tracy and, and then my contacts at the other agencies for recent retirees. And I definitely will start reaching out to folks. So.
Well, I think we'll, are there any other questions specific to the agenda? If not, then I'll, I'll stand for a motion on the approval of amended retention and referral bonus program. Second, having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Not hearing any, it passes unanimously. Now, I, I, I think that we need to give staff some direction on. The stipend proposal, I don't think we need to address the part time or using law enforcement. Because that's, I think, under.
Oh, absolutely.
Of what, of what you do with your, your organization. But as far as the stipend proposal. I, I, I think that this is at crisis level. I mean, we almost have as many vacancies as we do officers. And he's indicated that it's, you know, that it's a major issue with our facility. And I don't, what's our, what's our alternative if we don't have enough people to? We can't shut it down because we're mandated under the constitution to keep it open. So what's, if, if we just don't have the people, what do we do?
Ultimately, Mr. Chairman, we'd be reaching out to the governor's office and see if we'd get help from the National Guard.
Wow, that's, that seems extreme, but probably necessary if we get to that point. So what I would propose is to direct staff to look at implementing this or to implement it. And then to put it on the next meeting's agenda to, to ratify. So I give you that direction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number four, which is consideration of notice of intent to adopt. San Juan County Ordinance Number One Two Zero, the Cannabis Regulation Act. County Attorney Joe Sawyer.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you know, and we discussed briefly last meeting. The Cannabis Regulation Act was passed by the special legislative session. The act severely restricts the ability of local governments to restrict cannabis. And out of this one hundred and seventy page bill, there are only two pages stating what local governments can and cannot do. As a county, it's important that we get our ordinance in place by September first, twenty twenty one. When the state will begin processing license applications for cannabis producers, micro businesses. Our staff has come up with a proposed cannabis regulation ordinance. And at the commission's direction, we've made it more on the restrictive side at this point. And it's based on other preexisting ordinances and statutes, such as the Adult Entertainment Ordinance and the Liquor Control Act. Those are kind of tied into ordinances. So we figured that by putting those provisions in that they would withstand scrutiny. With your permission, I'd like to go through this ordinance section by section. To explain what is in it and see if the commission has any changes. We will incorporate your changes and we hope to get a notice of intent published immediately. We're thinking Sunday, so you can vote on the final ordinance by August seventeenth. All changes must be made tonight to get the final version passed on August seventeen. And I'll try to make this as painless as possible, but I'm not going to do it line by line, section by section. And so the, the proposed ordinance is in your, your books. And the first four pages are definitions, so I'm just going to skip over that. But it does define what, one important definition is what is a cannabis establishment? And a cannabis establishment means a cannabis testing laboratory, cannabis manufacturer, cannabis producer, cannabis retailer. Cannabis research laboratory, a vertically integrated cannabis establishment, a cannabis producer micro business. An integrated cannabis micro business, or a cannabis consumption area. So those are what we're going to regulate. On page five. We get into the heart of the ordinance. And section two states that this ordinance regulates commercial cannabis activity only. So it doesn't regulate personal can, personal cultivation or the use of cannabis. And we can't regulate that under the statute. So it's only cannabis, commercial cannabis activity. Section three is location. And we, we have a minimum separation distance of a thousand feet. So a cannabis establishment, which are all those ones I just mentioned. Must maintain a minimum separation distance of a thousand feet from any residence, religious assembly or church, library. Cultural center, community center, public park or government facility. But the thousand foot distance requirement does not apply to any school or daycare center. And the reason for that is because the statute prohibited us from, from regulating that distance. It can only be three hundred feet. I think we mentioned that last time. So I, I, I think your first decision would be, if you like, the one thousand foot distance requirement. And I took that requirement from our adult entertainment ordinance. Which regulates that adult entertainment business can, it needs to be at least a thousand feet from residences, churches, et cetera. So that's why we use the thousand feet in this, but we can reduce it if you'd like, or increase it.
Do you think the thousand feet will pass scrutiny?
That is hard to say. We're kind of on the forefront of this ordinance. We've, I've reached out to the New Mexico counties and I actually had a conversation right before I locked in the meeting. With an attorney down in Lee County. I think it'll be challenged for sure. The, the problem we might run into is do we have a scientific basis for recommending this one thousand feet distance? The reason why we settled on, staff settled on the thousand feet was we're worried about. Production of cannabis and the smell, which we understand is very pungent. And it kind of smells like the skunk odor. So we know that people are going to object to having that cannabis producers move in right next door to them. So we think that some distance requirement is necessary. We figured a thousand feet would definitely eliminate, well, not eliminate, but it would reduce complaints. So I guess I went around about, I didn't really answer your question, but I, I don't know if it would stand scrutiny or not. But our problem might be that we don't have the scientific basis at this point. And there's not really any established case law on it either because it's just kind of new.
Do you know how we came up with a thousand feet for the adult entertainment ordinance?
No, I don't. I don't. I think it was the same thought probably that, you know, people would complain if they, with all the traffic and the lights and. And to and from that they would be experiencing, which would be similar to having a cannabis retailer next door. That's probably why they came up with a thousand feet. You could potentially do three hundred feet. And then we know that the legislature thinks three hundred feet is a good idea because they use that for their schools and daycare centers. So that would probably be more likely to withstand the challenge than a thousand feet.
That's based on what they do with alcohol establishments right now? Do you have a fee?
I believe so. So I, I didn't specifically check that, that distance.
And that's probably more focuses on retail than it does production.
Right. Another option would be you could push production out a thousand feet and then have everything else be three hundred.
What's the difference though?
Seven hundred feet.
Well, I realize that, but what's the difference between low boy produce, make the production on it and the low boy smoking it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my thought in proposing that was that it would. It would take care of the, the pungent odor that we understand is associated with production. So a thousand feet would lessen those complaints. That would be the reason for the difference.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, so the, so like the Bud bars. We would try to keep them a thousand feet away from any other establishment, correct?
Yes.
Because they could sit outside and smoke and pungent odor.
Right.
Well, it's from any residence, church, library, cultural center.
Right.
Community center, government facility.
Because what the state's recommending to us is three hundred feet or less. And, and to me, that's. At three hundred feet, a younger person to me can see, you know, what's going on. You know, when a big law. Yeah.
What's the challenge process for this deal?
Challenge process.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in section. Let's see, I'm sorry, in section. Yes. If I can find it. Okay, in section, on page eight, which is section seven. We do have a, a provision for when people are denied, a person or entity has denied a permit. And that's section, that's subsection L on page eight. And so a person or entity denied a permit may, within ten days, file an appeal. Also under M, there's also a provision for variance. So any person or entity denied a permit may apply to the Board of County Commissioners for variance from any portion of this ordinance. Caused by unusual conditions, not caused by the actions of the applicant. In granting variances, the Board of County Commissioners may require such conditions as will substantially secure the objectives of this ordinance. And not adversely affect the health, safety and general welfare of the public. So the, the thought is, is that if someone were to come forward and say, you know. I have, I produce cannabis. And just by coincidence, my neighbor decided to produce cannabis. And as a result, our fields are right next to each other. So it makes this thousand foot requirement.
Impossible.
Yeah, impossible. And plus the, the point of the thousand feet was to reduce odors. And my, my field already is producing odors, so I shouldn't have to worry about my neighbor. In a situation like that, the commission could grant a variance. Because it's, you're upholding the purpose of the ordinance, but. Yeah, you're upholding the purpose and it just, it's a reasonable combination.
Because the thousand feet would be from the edge of your property line.
Yes, the definition for measurement is the nearest point of your property line to the nearest point of the other property line.
And Mr. Chairman, I might add, we did talk about, well, maybe it's the edge of your greenhouse or field or fence. But all those could be movable. And so it, it really needs to be something that doesn't move. Over, you know, because property line could be adjusted through a boundary line adjustment, but that's a very significant matter. Actually would be picked up by Mr. Barnett and subdivisions and, and review of something like that. So the property line really is the best way to, to manage distances.
Any further discussion on that, on that section?
I just, I, it's just hard for me to understand. How a governing body can say this farmer can grow in four feet away. This farmer cannot grow. And I don't know if we can write it, write it in where we, we don't have to give. The variance in it on every single one. I mean, how many are we looking at, at doing? I mean, I know we, none of us know right now because.
Right.
This is all brand new. But I don't want to get into where every single meeting, we're, we're brought forth a variance.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in the past, and, and I, we actually have a provision that allows you to appoint a hearing officer. Who could hear those variances on behalf of the commission. We have that for liquor license hearings. But to your point about it's not fair that pretty much the first person, the first farmer to get his permit. Then excludes the person, the next farmer. I, it's, you could just remove the, the distance requirement between producers. And that could potentially take care of that problem.
To address adjacent property.
Yes, and then, but continue to have a distance requirement between a residence and a farm. And by the way, for, for the purposes of measurement, a residence on a farm doesn't count. So we, you couldn't deny a permit because my house is, is close.
Because I live on my farm.
Right, right. So you could, you could remove the, the distance requirements between producers and then keep it for other ones. And, or you could even decrease it for other ones. It's, we really just wanted to give.
I think that that makes the most sense to, to remove that requirement between adjacent properties of. Applicants or however you, however you word it. So that's just going to reduce unnecessary variance. You know, I mean, it's obvious that if they're both applying for the license, that they don't care if they're within a thousand feet of each other.
Right. And, and Mr. Stark just, I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, would, would you like us to just strike cannabis establishment? Now, that's the long list that Mr. Sawyer went over of all those different types of activities. Or would be specific to just producers. Well, then you get into micro businesses, which are farmers that have less than two hundred plants. Vertically integrated cannabis establishments means you have somebody, you know, going from field to retail.
Mr.
Lots to think about.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you were to remove the requirement. Just that a cannabis establishment can't be next to another cannabis establishment. That would take care of the problem that Mr. Stark has mentioned. But you could still have a distance requirement between a cannabis establishment and a residence, a church.
Almost.
Yes. And then that way, two retailers could be next to each other. A producer and a retailer could be next to each other.
I think that that makes the most sense.
Yeah, I like that.
Bo Jing, what do you think? Does that make the most sense?
Yeah, that makes sense because we dealt with that in Chip Rock. With the odor and I guess, but we don't have any laws to follow out there. So I think this is.
In, in your experience out there, do you think a thousand feet would really help?
I was not a producer.
But just your experience in that situation here, do you think that the thousand feet would help?
Yeah, I think that would, yeah. Because it is very pungent and I know that people complained about that. Especially those that were living a producer and a resident. So it is, I think a thousand feet is welcome.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, so the next is, and I'm, I'm going to speed up. It's not going to all take this long, but section three B regards. regards this for a school and daycare center, um, from a cannabis establishment. Would you like to keep that at three hundred feet?
If, I think if the state specifically addressed those in the statute or in the act, I, I don't know as though we can increase the burden of the act.
No, you, you can increase it, but you could decrease it. You could say only a hundred feet from school or daycare.
I think that we should leave it at the three hundred. Any other input on that? Leave it at the three hundred.
Thirty hundred, yeah.
Commissioner Sullivan, leave that at the three hundred? Do you want to leave the three hundred in regards to the schools? The three hundred-foot requirement?
Think that would be better, but I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, uh, section three C is the measurement and D is the, um, well, I, I assume that you want to keep our definition of measurement, or would you like to adjust that? It's property line to property line right now.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay. And then, um, D just states that if there's a cannabis establishment operating and then, um, a residence or church moves within a thousand feet of it, that the cannabis establishment doesn't have to stop operating. And that's required by statute.
Okay. Um, so the only difference you're going to make is adjacent, uh, not include the definition laws. Cannabis establishments, they don't have to be at a thousand feet apart. Is that the difference you're going to make?
Yes, that's the one difference. We'll, we'll exclude cannabis establishments from the distance requirement to each other. So section four is operating times. And we base this on the liquor control laws. So a cannabis consumption area, which is where people consume cannabis, uh, it can only be open between the hours of seven AM and midnight. That is a little different than liquor because a bar can be open until two AM. But we, we put in the midnight restriction, but you could, you could say two AM or you could say less. I think the farther away you get from two AM, the more of a challenge you might, uh, get. If it were ten PM, there's more likelihood that someone would want to challenge this provision, saying it's unreasonable.
So liquor allows seven AM to two AM?
For, for a bar, which would be, I would say, equivalent to a cannabis consumption.
Mr. Chairman, so I read, I read through the bill and I, I'm still confused on. But I don't know what else to call it, Bud Bar or Consumption Bar? Do they have to sell it there in order to be a consumption bar? Or can you just, like, bring in your own? And the way I interpret, part of it, the way I interpreted it was, they don't have to have a sell license. They just have to have the Bud Bar license. And then they could bring in their own. And then there's another section in there, and I, I didn't bring my bill. There was another section in there that made it sound like no, that you couldn't just walk in with your own. So I'm.
I might be why they call it a consumption area because it's not a purchase-consumption area. It's just an area that you can consume.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I believe that the definition of a cannabis consumption area is just an area where cannabis products may be served and consumed. Um, I think when they talk about a place where you are buying it and then consuming it, I believe that that is a micro business. Um, and it, under the definition U, an integrated cannabis micro business is a person that's authorized to conduct one or more of the following: production, manufacture, sales and transportation, operation of one retail establishment, incurring, which means delivering it to people. Then I think the definition of, I think there was one of just micro, cannabis micro business, which is, if I can find it, um, I actually don't see a separate one. So I think I understand it as a cannabis consumption area. You could bring it in and consume it there, but I'm not sure about that, but I can get you an answer. As far as I'm concerned, I don't know if that, if that really factors into our regulation of it. We have to allow cannabis consumption areas because the statute says that we can't prohibit, uh, any activity, completely any activity that you can get a license for and you can get a cannabis consumption license. So, um, and the, the statute's very specific about, um, the regulation you can do in a cannabis consumption area, that you have to be over twenty-one, that, um, the smoke can't go into nearby offices and things like that. So I think that that area is probably prided from too much regulation.
Well, the next section kind of goes over consumption areas.
Okay. Yes, it does. Um, section five regulates cannabis consumption areas. And what I did here was I took, um, wording directly from the statute, the state statute. And also is the wording that the city of Santa Fe is used for their cannabis ordinance. And I figured that was the safest, um, way to go about doing it. Um, and it just provides, you know, what, what you can do in a cannabis consumption area. It says that, uh, you have to be twenty-one years of age or older, which is required by the statute. And then it has all the language about the, um, smoke infiltration and those things. So I didn't feel that I could really regulate what happened in a cannabis consumption area since it was already covered by the statute.
So the question we have to decide is the timing, seven AM to midnight, is that appropriate that we want in our ordinance?
I'm going to.
I have two.
I feel like we'll probably get challenged on that just because of the alcohol. But I think we can address that later if we have to.
Okay. Well, I'll leave that in. And, and my belief, uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, is that's a reasonable regulation. I feel that if we were saying seven PM, then we would definitely get a challenge. But midnight, um, just the fact that they may not even be getting any activity after midnight, so. And then retail, cannabis retailers, that is very similar to package, uh, retailers for liquor, where they are restricted to midnight. So I think we really don't solve that. Okay, so the, the next section, uh, on page seven is business registration. And here we just require cannabis, um, establishments to, uh, get registered with our business registration. So we're aware of where they are, uh, and those types of things. Section seven, on page seven, is the established, the cannabis establishment permit. It's pretty straightforward. We, we're going to have the permit be obtained from our community development department, which is like our other, uh, ordinances. The cost of the permit would be two hundred and fifty dollars for the initial permit and a hundred dollars for annual renewal. And we believe that that amount was reasonable because we're, we're going to need to have a fire inspection and a building inspection for each, um, for each establishment.
Is that for micro businesses or, or any cannabis, active, commercial cannabis activity?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, it is. Um, and then the C is the community development director can require the names and loca- locations, um, and other identifying information of the people who are involved with the cannabis establishment. And it differs based on if it's a partnership, a limited liability company, a corporation, and so forth, just because they have different documents that they file with the state.
So they don't have to tell us that every employee?
No, uh, Mr. Chairman, no, they don't. I'm just making sure I don't have that. If that isn't there, I'll remove it. I don't think that we had that, that they had to tell every employee. It was just the person who organized the business. They, they'll need to provide us with their federal and state tax ID numbers. They'll need to provide us with proof of compliance with our business registration ordinance. Um, they'll have to comply with our fencing requirements, which I'll get to in a little bit. Um, they'll have to pass a building code inspection, uh, a fire inspection. And we added, um, there's a special provision in the fire code dealing with marijuana and cannabis establishments. So we have them comply with that portion of the fire code. Uh, G says that, uh, basically, we won't hold up them getting permitted with the state waiting on us doing our fire and building inspection. That's what, uh, subsection G is. Uh, subsection H is no permit issued to a mobile, temporary, or portable building. And that's something that you may want to keep or change. Um, they, the thought was, is we didn't want to have food trucks that were hard to keep track of and, and that would just move in and, and, uh, be selling without it. You know, it's more difficult to keep track of those. And, um.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I might add, Mr. Sawyer, if you could, um, think of snow cone checks for retail locations. That was the other thought behind the mobile, temporary, portable building, so. You're trying to envision all the possibilities that could potentially exist if you're applying for a license. You think of retail, you think of a building that's going to be, you know, permanent foundation and certain amount of square feet, but not necessarily.
And so I assume you, you'd like me to keep that in at this point, okay? Subsection I is no permit issued through cannabis establishment. And that's also patterned after the liquor license law. Um, that's been banned since nineteen ninety-nine with liquor. So we figured that it'd be, and, but we don't necessarily have to do that. But we, we figured that we would try to mimic the liquor license control laws.
Who's going to monitor all this stuff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, our code compliance officer and then, um, also any licensed law enforcement officer. So it is going to add a burden to, to those departments.
And business registration.
Is there any shorthand that you need?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Sullivan, um, certainly law enforcement seeing, um, some challenges. Uh, we'd let the sheriff speak to the back member of deputies that they're down. But with community development, um, you know, we're fully staffed. I, I wish we had two or three more departments, um, but we do have one and, and certainly he can prioritize time necessary, uh, to move between, you know, compliance issues relative to junk and trash, uh, and then making sure we're permitting these businesses appropriately. And if, and if, if we do get complaints regarding a, a business that may be unpermitted um, or, you know, not in compliance with our ordinance, then those would be, you know, case by case, specific issues that he could, he could go tend to.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners.
There may be a problem, Mike, with that. Holding this road up on this till the next meeting or? I know it, and it did not have to be done by what, September the first?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Sullivan, that's correct. So we, based upon the timeframe between the notice of, of the ordinance to the public and you all taking action, given we only have one meeting, regular scheduled meeting in August. Now, you all could choose to host a special meeting if you would, to, to choose to do so. So we could, potentially, we'd have to look at the schedule, maybe make that work before September first if, if you wanted to have a, a special meeting. If you needed more time to, to think about the items contained within the ordinance.
Come on out. You didn't see that hit the off a lot.
Well, the problem we run into, if we don't get it established, then we don't get to enforce anything.
Hold on.
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, uh, one of the problems we foresee in not getting the ordinance in place would be that statute says you can't make a cannabis establishment move once they've been issued a license. So, um, the reason we wanted to get in before September first was we, we wanted to get a handle on the distance requirements especially. And so if, if it's delayed, the only, the risk that you would run would just be that people would be placing their establishments in areas that you wanted to regulate more. But that's a risk you take. If you'd like to take more time to, uh, craft this.
You have one other?
Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, the, the next two, uh, were the, the appeal provision and the variance provision. And then, uh, in on page nine just states that if you op- operate a cannabis establishment without a permit, it's a violation of the ordinance. Uh, section eight is fencing. We, uh, we have a provision that any cannabis producer, research laboratory, cannabis testing laboratory is required to erect and maintain a lockable fence of sturdy construction measuring at least six feet in height and closing and screening from view the area where the cannabis is located. Uh, and then it will remain locked during non-business hours. That's a provision that we could take out if you want. The reason for that was, uh, tried to, um, remove problems involved with theft, with, um, basically just screening it from view, kind of like we do junkyards. But we, we don't need to have that if you don't want.
So that would require, uh, somebody who was producing down by the river to erect a fence all the way around their farm?
Mr. Chairman, yes. And the thinking behind that was just to try to anticipate problems with theft and things like that. But I, but on the flip side, you could think that, well, if someone doesn't want their cannabis stolen, they'll probably erect a fence anyway, so.
Yeah, it has to be a fence that you can't see through.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, we, we put that in there just thinking of the, the junk, the junkyard ordinance. We figured that there would be some citizens that don't want to see cannabis cultivation. But, uh, that doesn't need to be in there either. It's just, we, we erred on the strict side when we wrote this.
I think that almost seems a little too burdensome.
That, that's a little tough, six feet.
Around an entire farm, you know?
How many acres do they have in Shiprock?
Well, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I, I can strike that out then.
I, I like the idea of the fence. I'm not sure that we shouldn't have something in there saying that, that they should have it fenced off, maybe not, you know, obstructing view and, and not six feet. I, I think a fence is a good idea and they're, you're right, they're probably going to do that anyway. But I don't, I don't know.
I think it's a little too burdensome to, because if they're a producer and a commercial producer, I, I don't know if watching cannabis production is similar to our junk ordinance where. where we're arguing that it reduces property values. I don't, I don't know if it rises to that level. So I'm not sure requiring a six-foot fence around the entire property is, it's necessary.
What was the thinking of having this fence around it?
It, it was, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fort Murray, it was really, the thought of an attractive nuisance, really. It would, it would attract theft. It might, you know? It also, we were trying to screen it from view, be similar to the, uh, the junkyard ordinance. So it was kind of an aesthetic reason, plus a security reason, trying to anticipate problems. If, if, if it was kept locked and somewhat hidden, there might be fewer problems with theft and those types of things. But, but, um, it probably would be fenced anyway by, because I would assume it's going to get stolen if it's, if there's no fence.
Probably take care of, rises.
Right.
I say we strike him.
Okay. Well, uh, if, if the commission would like to, all the way you want me to strike him, I'll strike him. Okay.
Writing down all the different changes that we need to, whenever we make this motion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I'm doing it. And then also we have Danielle and Valerie watching. And they're also taking notice too, so we don't miss anything. So section eight is completely out. Yes, I believe that if that's what you'd like, I can remove it. And I'll remove other references throughout the ordinance. Section nine was prohibiting the sale, um, from portable, temporary, or drive-through locations.
There goes my food truck.
And the thought there was just it'd be hard to regu- to regulate them if they're mobile. Would you like me to keep that in?
Yes.
Okay. Section 10 is smoking cannabis in a public place. That's outlawed by statute. It's just emphasizing that you can't smoke cannabis.
That's already in the act.
Yes. Uh, section 11 just permits existing cannabis establishments to continue to exist, but they'll need to get a, a permit. Section 12, uh, provides that the San Juan County Code Compliance Officer, a certified San Juan County Sheriff's Deputy, or the San Juan County Fire Marshal or designated may issue citations for violation of the ordinance. Section 13 provides a $300 penalty. That's just, that's what statutes permit the, the counties to, to impose. We, we're limited to $300 for a violation of an ordinance, unless it's littering, which we're allowed $1,000. But in this case, it'd be 300. And then each day that the violation, uh, continues will be deemed a separate violation. That standard in our ordinances is to prevent somebody from just seeing that as their, their license, their license, like, well, I'll pay the $300 fine and now you, you have to leave me alone for a year. So. Um, I, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I assume you want me to leave those provisions in? Uh, section 14 just states that if any portion of the ordinance is declared unenforceable, um, by court, the rest will remain in effect. And section 15 states that this is an emergency and it needs to go into effect immediately. But in the event, um, a court finds that it's, it wasn't an emergency, then it'll go into effect 30 days after the ordinance is recorded with the county clerk.
And will all of the section numbers listed move up to replace section eight? So they'll all reflect the, the section number lower than what they currently are?
Yes, well, I'll renumber all of those. And that's, that's it. That is the, the ordinance. And I've noted your, your suggestions and I, I think Valerie and Danielle have also.
Do you want to just review them real quick?
I, I can go through it.
That'd be helpful if you'd like.
I, I'm okay with that. I would like to review.
Without it.
All right. Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
They're, they're okay with that.
Oh, they're okay, okay.
Are there any other questions? Any other discussion? If not, I will stand for a motion, uh, for approval of publication, publication of notice of intent to adopt the ordinance.
So moved, second?
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume that it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number five, which is consideration of approval of proposed fiscal year 2022 final budget, uh, resolution number 20 dash, or I'm sorry, 21 dash 22 dash 03. Uh, Kim Martin.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I come before you today to present our final budget for FY '22. Uh, once you guys approve this, uh, we will be submitting it to DFA. Our deadline to submit to DFA is July 31st. Um, once I submit it to DFA, they have until September 6th to, to approve our budget. Um, and historically, they've generally given their approval around mid, um, August. So, um, once, uh, you guys approve, we will still continue to operate off of our interim budget that you all approved back in May until the final approval from DFA, at which time I will close the books and we will move forward into the, the final FY '22 budget. Within this budget, um, it was a, this was my first budget cycle, um, to do this as, uh, the CFO. And I want to thank all of the departments and, um, Jim Cox and Mike Stark for all of their guidance and help and helping me to pull this together and be able to bring it to you timely and be able to meet all of the deadlines. Um, with that being said, within this budget, um, we also, we have included the, um, comp survey for the deputy sheriffs, the change, uh, to remove the, uh, training ban for the detention officers. Um, and then we've also had some other staffing changes, some cost savings and stuff. So originally, the comp survey was going to cost around roughly $650,000. But then, once we, we changed things around, um, it's ultimately going to be about $550,000. So we were able to save about $100,000 just with other savings in other areas with other departments. Um, let's see here, uh, the, our, our ending cash balances became more higher than what we had originally anticipated. That's primarily due to, um, the cash balance, uh, for our GRT equalization. What we had originally budgeted, uh, came in higher, which helped our ending cash balance. And also, um, the PIL, we had received an additional funding for that that we did not budget originally. So that helped our ending cash balance. Um, with that being said, um, about 48% of our, our reserve funds can cover the general fund expenditures. So that's a good, that's a good place for us to be, um, considering that at the interim budget, we were at 36%. So we're, we're doing fairly well with all of that. Let's see here, what else was I going to say? So our, um, our overall revenues for the FY '22 budget is, uh, 111 million, 954,990 dollars. Um, our in-being expenditures is 145 million, 161,310 dollars. Yes, you, you can see that the revenues are lower than what the overall expenditures are. But, um, as I had mentioned to you during our budget workshop, I had spoke about the special revenue funds. Um, a lot of times, those are one-time revenues that are coming in. So they're spending against their cash balances. So that's what, why there's a difference on that. Um, and also we have our bond funds in here, then that, then they're just spending down the cash balance. So, um, with that, I stand within, for any questions, um, and look for your approval for the FY '22 budget.
Any questions? One thing that I, that I want to focus on, um, I, I realize that this, as far as the comp study brings our, uh, detention center and, uh, sheriff's department, uh, up to speed. I, I want it to be a focus, a, uh, that once we get this done, we know where we're at. Look forward to bringing everyone else in the county that was a part of that study to bring them up to, up to where they need to be. Uh, now that we have this under control, we know where we're at. I want that to be a, a focus and a priority to, to see where we're at and how to make that happen.
Mr. Chairman, we can.
Can we do that?
We can certainly do that. The, the, the one caveat, as you know, that we, um, would like to wait till mid-September until we get our first, uh, first grocery seeds tax. With the. State that includes internet sales tax. And, and, and then we would feel comfortable about having those.
But what I'm saying is, is I want it to happen as soon as feasible.
Mr. Chairman, we can certainly do that. We, I, I think we could potentially do that as soon as October. Does that sound, sound good to you?
Uh, just as soon as, as soon as we can. I, I, I don't want to leave them hanging out in the dark uh, any longer than we have to, um, once we know where we're at.
Okay.
And any questions? I know we've, we've hashed and rehashed and, uh, how many different of these books? I, I don't know if there's any other questions, any, any comments, any discussion?
Just a comment that, um, I commend all of you and all the departments working with you because I know even when you try and do your own budget at home, it's rough.
Thank you.
You know, submitting it on time and I guess the state makes that decision. So I thank everybody for that.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2022 final budget, the resolution number 21 dash 22 dash.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? We're supposed to budget at home?
Yeah.
I, I would just like to say, this is my first opportunity to go through the budget process. And I wouldn't like, I would like to say you've made it painless, but that's not exactly true. But I have, uh, I have learned a lot and I, I do appreciate your department and, and Mr. Cox.
Awesome, thank you. And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. We'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Any other questions, discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I will presume that, uh, it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to our report from county management, Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a couple items. Um, county fair is going to be upon us here soon, August 6th to the 14th. A lot of preparations from folks at M D Park. We appreciate all of our staff there and then all of our law enforcement officers who will be present down there providing security. And it just takes a lot of people to put that event on. Uh, the second largest fair in the state, only the state fair.
One of the oldest. How long had we, had it been running? And then we skipped a year last year? It was like 18, 18 something, right?
1893, yeah.
1893, thank you, Mr. Hill.
World War II or something like that, there was a missed fair, no?
No, not even a war stopped us.
Okay.
Not even a war, but. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there. I'm just glad it's back on.
Same here. We, we are anticipating, and what we're hearing, uh, Mr. Hill shared today with, in our department, had like an official meeting that, uh, carnival, who's, they've had a couple stops prior to us, um, seeing overwhelming attendance at previous fairs, uh, overwhelming attendance at carnivals. So we're expecting this to be a very, very large crowd this year because we missed a year and folks are wanting to get out and go have a funnel cake and walk the midway. So, uh.
Turkey leg.
Or turkey leg.
Well, I would, I would encourage everyone to get out and actually watch, uh, some of these, these kids exhibit their animals, show their animals and, and do the different things to watch them in action and see, to see what they do. This is, you know, you only get to see what they do for, for a week, but they're for four months, five months, and some animals even a, a, a year. They're, they're working and working with these animals. And, you know, we just get to see a short window of it, but it's, it's, it, it's fun to watch, fun to see. And so I'd encourage everybody to, to go out and actually see it in action.
The livestock sale is on Saturday night?
I believe Saturday morning.
Yeah, like one or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's $10 for adults and $5 for kids?
That's my understanding. I probably want to check the website to make sure I'm right. And I, I appreciate you bringing that up because sometimes there's the misnomer. We're actively involved in the fair, but it's actually the San Juan County Fair Board, which is a separate entity from us that actually organizes it and puts it all on. We just support it with, with staff, janitorial, et cetera. So. We do have a link, Mr. Neely put a link on the, on our website that links to the San Juan Fair Board's website. So they, once again, they, they're the ones that maintain that website. I think that's correct.
And we had a report from Darren Church's Day Rotary. And, uh, so there's, from Monday to Thursday, there's some nights you can get in free or two for one or those type of things. So definitely worth seeing.
You have an extra couple thousand dollars laying around? You can go buy an animal or fill your freezer. In the year, that's right. We also, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, one other item. You know, we, we're going to be hosting, uh, a Cedar Hill project information meeting here in this chamber. I think Commissioner O'Neil, uh, will be present, but just wanted to make you all aware of it. It will be Wednesday, August 4th, uh, at 6:00 PM to talk about the two projects. Uh, one that's been previously approved by the commission, the boat launch. Uh, but we do have a final design and we have some final studies to share with citizens. I'd like to, to do that and get their input. And then included within the capital budget, um, which you just recently approved, uh, we have the historic pedestrian trust bridge, um, that we'd like to, to talk to folks in that area about, uh, the two-mile walking path that can be created with that structure and, and also save and improve a historic, um, structure in Cedar Hill. So just wanted to make you aware of that. And then Mr. Neely just sent me an update that I was going to share with you because the public health order expires in three days. And so we have heard a lot of rumors about what may be changing or not changing. It appears that KOB is reporting that the governor will recommend residents wear masks indoors. Uh, but that, um, there'll be a, a news conference tomorrow at 3:00 PM to discuss this more. So, um, one of the things we had heard is potentially, um, New Mexico following in California's footsteps and requiring masks regardless if you're vaccinated or not. So, um, that probably is good to hear that it's just going to be a strong recommendation. But stay tuned, it could change between today and tomorrow. I will report that we are 64.4% fully vaccinated in San Juan County. Um, those with one shot, we're at 76.8%. And that's the population 18 and over per the state's website. So I think, like I said, I haven't checked it, but I believe we're in the top 10 still of counties statewide. That's 33 counties. So that's all I have for you tonight.
All right. So any reports from, uh, elected officials or department heads?
I just had something. So I just wanted to let everybody know that John will be throwing out the first pitch tomorrow night at Connie Matt. So I hope he's warming up his arm and getting ready to go.
I'll do it. I'll do it left-handed. Can I do it?
I dare you, my legs.
Good about this fastball? Thank you for that. I assume you're done.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, Mr. Stark thought I might let you in on some information. Uh, as you have noticed, we've gotten some rain lately, although we're still exceptional drought. We have started issuing burn permits again, people to start cleaning up their yards and whatnot. So far, it's only been till noon, but we expect to expand that all day here soon. Uh, one other note, in case you didn't notice or see on Facebook, we did send a truck up to Oregon for the bootleg fire. We have one truck and three personnel up there helping to assist. Uh, about 2,000 personnel nationwide are helping, 400,000 acres still and doing what we can. They've been there for just over a week. Hopefully be back next week. Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff?
Sheriff.
Commissioner, I've got, uh,
Mr. Commissioner, I've got, uh, two items. Uh, the first is with the discussion about marijuana and the presentation I gave you. Uh, I reached out to the, uh, town of Kirkland and gave them the same presentation. I want to make sure that they were aware of their need of, uh, creating a city ordinance. Um, as you are aware, we provide law enforcement services in the town of Kirkland, so I want to make sure they were aware they weren't. Um, I told them to reach out to our, our county attorney for any advice, being that he was already on top of it. I'm not sure if they've had the opportunity to do so yet.
Yes, they, they requested a copy of our ordinance.
Very good.
Of course, I'll send them the updated.
I gave him my recommendation if they could make sure that, you know, of course they're fortunate to have zoning, but I said if they could make sure it mirrors, uh, what we have in the county as best as they could, it would make it a lot easier on my deputies. Make sure there was no confusion. Uh, the second thing I want to just inform you of, make you aware of, it's been a rough day for the S O family. Uh, we found out today that two of our former deputies passed away today. Uh, Carlos Orviso and Tom Asby. They both retired from us 10 years ago, but we lost both of them today. So, um, that information circulated throughout the community right now. And, uh, Carlos Orviso and his family, uh, still reside in the community. And of course we've reached out to give them any assistance we can, just with him being a former deputy. And unfortunately, uh, Tom Asby's family, we're reaching out to them, but he relocated to Kansas. But anything, anything we can do for them, we're definitely here for them. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Last but not least, well, maybe not last, we'll, we'll see. It's yet to be known.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Cedean, Chief Human Resources Officer, for San Juan. Um, and I just wanted to give you an update on a program we had just completed. Um, this was the summer internship program that was offered through Mexico Public Education Department. And, um, it was a late start. We got on, we were enrolled in the program, uh, at the end of April. And they only gave us about a week and a half, two weeks to decide if we wanted to participate and so forth. Um, had to crunch, find workstations, find any of the, um, students that were wanting to work and so forth. Um, initially San Juan County was allotted 300 slots, head tons. We were able to get it down to about forty-two, forty-one students altogether. We worked with City of Farmington, where we were able to, um, place some of the, the majority of the students over in there with the City of Farmington. They had 27 students and we have 14 here. Some of our participating partners with the county were our first third department human resources, county manager's office, media. I definitely had one tail like them around. Um, safety emergency management, the clerk's office, uh, community development, parks and facility treasures, public works and purchasing. So thank you to all those departments for participating. So with that, we have a certificate that was presented, that was given to us, and we'd like to present it to Mike. Again, for his support and, um, you know, with this program and just go talk to him and tell him it's like, okay, we can do this with the crunch. Can we do this? This would be very supportive of, of the program. And so they sent a, a receipt, a certificate and just like to present it to Mike at this time and say thank you for your encouragement and your support for all this. And then also too, is that this fall we'll be working, continuing in somewhat of a similar capacity for interns for the program for the fall. It's through departments and schools, um, and it's through their work-based learning program. So, yeah, we're still learning more about that. So this fall we should have our students work in this year. Not forty-two.
Is, is this going to be a reoccurring thing every summer?
We had a meeting with them. In fact, um, a few weeks ago, they came down, a couple of their staff came down and they highlighted San Juan County because we jumped on it, we got it going. And like, so their students finished up last week. So they gave us some indication that it's a good possibility that we can continue this year. So. I know, is it my staff or where you go before we do take on something like this?
Well, quite frankly, it, it creates a positive thing in the community and potential future county employees.
The, we focused on the quality. So it was more of the high quality, you know, like, um, the type of internship. So we wanted to expose them to careers in county government, um, not just to make them secure and tied in a file, but to actually work with the different department heads and learn what did they practice, what did the teachers do, what did, what did we do? So they gave the NAB and act, and we followed up. There were some students with ours and with Farmington that were placed in part-time classes for the fall, for the school year. So they'll continue to do it. It's a good program for exposure for county government positions. So that's all I have to say.
Is this a photo op?
Oh, it can be.
I was thinking you need.
Oh, okay. I'll come down.
Oh, yeah. Receiving. Of course.
Well, me and John.
Ready, team number?
One, two, three.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
All right, thanks. Then one would be like this. Champion.
Any other department heads, elected officials?
Yeah, just, I wanted to ask, so what's the normal, um, when it, because of the passing of the two officers, uh, can we send flowers or in lieu of flowers, they have donations? What do you, you normally do?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Fortner, we could certainly, um, if you would like us to send flowers, that's common on behalf of the county commission, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to. Ready to rock and roll?
Yeah.
That brings us to comments, input from the general public. Uh, limited to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or, uh, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Uh, these comments, uh, I'm not going to read all that, limited to three minutes. Do we have any, uh, let, let's start with, are there any in-person comments? Don't see any. And do we have any electronic, uh, email comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do. Would you like me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Read that to the record? Uh, this comment is from, um, Lauren Burnally, Policy Analyst with the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission. She emailed this comment, uh, just before the meeting today. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. On behalf of the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, we are requesting the San Juan County Clerk amend the current precinct boundaries to conform with the Navajo Nation boundaries located in San Juan County, New Mexico. And then H R C is ready to meet with San Juan County officials to jointly address the mandated amendment as specified in Senate Bill 304. We appreciate your attention to this important matter. Thank you.
You'll look into that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the county clerk is already working with, uh, that group.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, um, Commissioner Totachini and I and Charisse actually had a meeting prior to this meeting. So we are, we're looking to see, um, which changes could be made.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anybody online that would wish to make a statement? Mr. Neely? I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. Well, with that, uh, it brings us to, uh, it looks like we need, there's need for a closed session. Uh, I'll stand for a motion.
Some big.
Second.
I think the motion has to be specific, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into a closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation related to the replacement power of the San Juan generating station.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, uh, those in favor that we go into a closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear any. Uh, passes, let's go into closed session and we will be back. I don't hear any passes. Let's go into closed session and we will be back.